I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, Christina.
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen.
Here.
Cole, Parsons.
President.
Mayor Lombard.
Here.
First item we need to approve the agenda. We have deleted item number F, three and four as we have already approved those items from the last board meeting, I understand. So if I could have a motion to approve the agenda is revised.
So moved.
Motion is second to approve the agenda is revised. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have two sets of minutes, January 30th and February 3rd. If I can have a motion to approve those as presented? Motion is second to approve the minutes from January 30th and February 3rd as presented. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We need a motion to approve the bills and claims submitted with the agenda. If I could have that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the bills and claims submitted with the agenda. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. On the consent calendar, we have a plat of lot 4B in block two of the Heartland Business Park. If I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
But a motion is second to approve the consent calendar. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, anybody wishing to address the council may do so at this time in our public comment section of the meeting. Seeing and hearing none, we'll proceed with our regular agenda. Under old business, we have three second readings of ordinance 600, 601, and 602. If there's an objection, I'll ask for a motion to approve the second reading on all three of those.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the second reading of ordinance 600, 601, and 602 as presented. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 9A1 is to approve a consulting contract with Landscapes Golf Management LLC in the amount of $3,500 a month for four months, a total of approximately $14,000. Remembering that this is just a consulting agreement with Landscapes Unlimited to help us with budget, business development, and marketing throughout our first year here of new management. If I could have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion.
I'm sorry, I'll turn my page. I did provide a revised contract to administration team here on...
Friday. To clarify that it also includes the golf course and banquet hall, so the one that we'd be signing with them would change paragraph one to specify the banquet hall, and on exhibit A, the golf course pro shop, fairway lounge, and banquet hall as well, just to make sure the council understands that.
But a motion is second. Any questions or comments?
When are they going to start? Do you know yet?
In speaking with representatives from Landscapes, they will have some, two employees out here, I believe, starting Friday to start working with staff. Their official start day will be the first of the month, but they'll get about a week's lead time on it.
And they've got approval from the council as opposed?
Yes.
Further questions, comments? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Parks and Recreation work report is there for your review, as well as the monthly police report, inspection report, and fire department reports. Next, under administration, item D1, we have the first reading of ordinance 596, small cell wireless facilities, 5G type stuff. Brian, comments?
This was developed by representatives from city attorneys as well as the wireless communication providers. It kind of sets a standard ordinance across the state for the development of 5G networks and the installation of appropriate equipment, including antennas and support equipment. P&amp;Z has reviewed it and recommends its approval.
If I can have a motion to accept the first reading?
So moved.
Motion is second to accept the first reading of ordinance 596. Any further questions or comments from the council? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D2 is listed as standard contracts. The administration and the city attorney have developed a standardized contract for us to use as a city for all of the contractual arrangements that we enter into, rather than using each individual company's contract. It's a good positive move in the right direction. Any comments from the council?
Questions? Opposition?
No need for adoption because as we go through some of these, some of this language may be tweaked depending on the consultant that we're using. So this is just the kind of the standard format that we'll be using. But then you'll improve each individual contract as it comes forward with the consultant.
Everybody good?
Good.
Excellent. Thank you. Under streets, work report is there for your review. Item E2 is a discussion and quote on water barriers. Brian, I'll have you brief us.
Yep. We've been looking at some way to reduce or the requirement for sandbagging for those two houses down on Redwood. Public Works Director Raleigh Hooky has looked at these aqua barriers. We've got a quote to supply two of them that would stretch from the west house to the east house, and then we would still need to sandbag up to east end. The quote is for $49...
$585.
$585. To purchase these, they're approximately, they would hold back floodwaters how deep, Raleigh?
Six feet.
So that would be adequate for anything we've seen to date. I knock on wood when I say that. This would, this would, it wouldn't eliminate currently the need to sandbag. Like I said, we'd have to sandbag the east end, but these would roll out and they'd fill in approximately five hours. We've been very fortunate. When we have had to sandbag, we've had a tremendous turnout for volunteers. You know, whether it's the high school kids, sports teams, adults, it's been phenomenal. But it does take considerably more hours than five hours to get those sandbags up. And we've been fortunate up until the last, the last flood event where we sandbagged and sandbagged, and then they projected that the flood would peak higher than their projections, which unfortunately it did. It flooded the two houses. We've looked at some type of a berm in the past. You know, unfortunately, we can only probably put a berm three, maybe four feet up at the most, which would still require sandbagging based upon the last couple of floods. The other issue with a berm of that type, we'd have to deal with the Corps of Engineers and some no-rise certifications because we'd be building a permanent barrier. We'd have to show that we wouldn't be flooding out or increasing the flood somewhere else. These are temporary in nature, so as the flood goes away, we take them back out.
Do we have any guesstimate on what the berm would cost in comparison?
Stockwell did do a study of this a couple of years ago, three years ago maybe, and they came up with three different options, and they were in that million dollar range. They were pretty expensive. And I would say just the no-rise that we had to do for the Holly project, that cost about $60,000. So...
So a quick question for Lisa, or do we need a motion before I ask?
I would entertain a motion to approve purchase at $49,585, I think, for two bags, and then we can go ahead and discuss.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Go ahead, Dana.
So I guess I have a little hesitation because it's personal property. So Lisa, can, I mean, is there any clarity you can give us around what our exposure would be to place these on personal property? I get this visual of us pumping all these thousands of gallons of water into this large baffle. I mean, if this baffle gives, and we've in essence dumped all of this water...
That was directed to Lisa, you said?
Yeah, I think she's asking Tammy a question.
Yeah, I was asking Tammy a question because I wasn't sure of where they were going, if it was in private property or if it was in a right-of-way. I believe these are the properties, and Brian can clarify if I'm wrong, but maybe about 10 years ago, we had substantial discussion with the homeowners relative to their concerns that things may not have been done appropriately relative to the floodplain and notice. I think it would be a good move on the city part to try and put something like this in there. We would need to get permission from them to put it in there, and we would do that ahead of time and work with them now so that we can put it in there. I would say cities all the time do things to help private properties where you have something like this going on. So this would not be unique for us.
Could that permission be like in the form of an easement?
Either an easement or an agreement. But before we would go on and put it on there, we would get their permission. But I'd like to have something in writing with them. And I'm not sure if there's been any discussions with the homeowners on this.
Yeah, they're receptive.
So, so is this something that we're going to continue doing in perpetuity? What happens when there's a homeowner change? I mean, is this something that we're responsible from now until forever? You know, this has been going on for a long time.
Yep. I mean, we've assumed those responsibilities with the sandbagging. This would just ease the burden of the sandbagging and not rely on volunteers to get down there and build up.
That was going to be my question. Have we sandbagged it almost every year?
Since, yeah, since at least 2010.
So this would be more of an effort to alleviate or help our workload in sandbagging.
Correct. You know, unfortunately, when we need to sandbag those houses, it also means that we're probably going to be out sandbagging city infrastructure as well. So I don't think there's been a flood down there where we haven't been sandbagging and city crew had to, had to take off to go sandbag someplace else.
Could we potentially use these baffles in other locations than two?
Yes, they're very portable.
How long do they last?
There's a 10-year warranty on them. They also come with patch kits, et cetera. From my experience down there with the flooding, there isn't a lot of debris that washes up. There's some twigs and some sticks, but nothing big. They're fairly thick plastic vinyl construction.
Very portable in the unfilled stage.
Yes.
A more expensive option, and I'm not a proponent for it, would be to buy the properties.
That's something that we may want to look at in the future.
And I think that was one of Stockwell's proposals when they looked at the three different options. That was one of the proposals. That wasn't the millions.
And then the process to release all the water in these baffles, is that simple?
Yeah, I'm not sure. That other slide that was up there, I think that kind of showed the design of the bag itself.
That one or the other one?
Maybe it doesn't, maybe I didn't send that one with, but it has, there you go. On the right-hand side there, you can see there's two tubes there that actually let the water out of the bag. So it's fairly simple. There's an overflow tube on the top which lets the air come out of the bags and stuff, too. They're fairly simple to fill and de-water them.
I'm guessing logic would tell me that you would wait for floodwaters to recede before...
Correct. Yep.
Any other questions?
Yeah. I would assume whatever agreement we had with the property owner, if for some reason these bags were to fail, we would have some protection against dumping these into...
That's what I was trying to...
Okay, perfect.
My last question. Are there any other properties in town that this would set a precedence for us doing something similar for them as well?
There's the ones with floodplain issue. There's, there's four houses in that area in the floodplain. The two on the east end are between 12 and 18 inches. The other one, I think, is a matter of a couple inches, and the other one is probably about an inch or two as well. Those are the only ones I know of that the residence is in the floodplain. There's the house by Casey's. A portion of that property is in the floodplain, but the house is not.
If I could interject one other thing. Last year, when we had the rainstorm, the city went around and pumped the water out of people's backyards. We didn't have an easement for that. Don't have an agreement for that either, so I just wanted to point that fact out, that we've helped the community in the past, so...
Hearing no further comments, I'll call the question. All those in favor of purchasing two water barriers at a cost of $49,585, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item E3 is a change order on the Brandon addition, Brandon Park addition improvement project change order number two. It's a deduct of $16,250. A variance in quantities, less quantities used than budgeted or bid is dealing with Sukup Construction. If I could have a motion to approve that change order, deduct in the amount of $16,250.
So moved.
Motion is second to approve change order number two with Sukup Construction. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Following that up, we will make final pay application number six to Sukup Construction, the amount of $109,278 for the Brandon Park addition improvement project. I have a motion to approve that payment?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the final pay app in the amount of $109,278 to Sukup Construction. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number E5, we have the bid opening on the core area Phase One project. Brian, I'm going to ask you to brief us on the bids as they were opened with the alternates.
Yep. The long anticipated bid opening for the core Phase One was done Tuesday. We received five bids. We had two bid alternates. Alternate number one was for asphalt streets. Alternate number two was for concrete streets. Low bid for alternate one was submitted by Sukup Construction for $6,288,888. Low bid for alternate two, the concrete, was submitted by Holstein Excavating in the amount of $6,710,583.25. We took a look at both bidding asphalt and concrete, just to see what the comparison would be throughout the core, or seeing if one would be a cheaper alternative than the other for construction. My opinion, and Public Works' opinion is accept a bid from Sukup Construction for alternate number one, asphalt street. It's about $420,000 cheaper than the asphalt or the concrete bid. If we're going to extend this throughout the core area, so if we use concrete in Phase One, we would need to use it throughout the core. It'd be about a $2 million cost. For the total core reconstruction, we'd also have to take a look at talking to H&amp;W and change order for Main Street and Dogwood and their project. So Raleigh can certainly update you or give us some information as to why they prefer asphalt over concrete.
Yeah, the Public Works Department probably would rather have the asphalt just for the simple fact. We, as a prime example, we had a water leak over here on First Avenue, I believe it was last winter. The asphalt allows the water to come up a little easier than the concrete does, and we still had to chase it 30 to 40 feet before we actually found the service leak. So my guys aren't really equipped. I don't really have a lot of the equipment to take care of that. And one of our problems is, is we don't like shutting the water down for everybody when we do have a water leak, but we do have to do that. So if I have to hire a contractor, you know, eight o'clock at night, who's going to be around to call a contractor, you know, to get ahold of the contractor, I should say, and then have them show up within two hours? So there's a lot of other things. I've seen concrete heave a lot quicker than the asphalt does. Maintenance on it's different. There's other things, too. I mean, we've kind of set a precedent with redoing Sylvan Circle already as asphalt, too. So I guess I, my guys are more knowledgeable with the repairs and stuff of that, so...
What do you think the difference in the life cycle is, Raleigh, concrete versus asphalt?
Well, Holly Boulevard was done in 2008, and we've been trying to do a repair job on that for the last two to three years. So it's, you know, I don't know what the cost analysis is. I don't think we have the time, you know, putting concrete down. Just as an example, again, Holly Boulevard going west to the bridge, the cure time for the concrete alone is a lot longer than your asphalt, so...
Do we do concrete on that one just because of the traffic load?
I think it was kind of to continue it with Holly as it is through town, so...
I would entertain a motion to accept administrative recommendation to approve the low bid from Sukup with alternative one in the amount of $6,288,888.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second to approve the low bid with alternate number one from Sukup Construction in the amount of $6,288,000. Further comments or questions from the council?
Yeah. So, so we had a committee that, kind of a committee that worked on this, right? Is that correct? Okay, like a work group? Okay. And so the recommendation was to do the asphalt from that group? Is that correct?
The advisory team didn't have a recommendation asphalt or concrete. They just, their recommendation was to let's bid, vote, and see what it comes out as.
Okay. So other than cost, we feel that there are some other reasons to go with asphalt rather than concrete, correct, Raleigh? Okay. So my question is the sidewalks. Is that part of this right now, or is that later? Is that part of this now?
It's part of the bid. It's included in the bid.
Okay. So I guess from a clarification standpoint, and for our residents that watch this, can you share with me the reasoning between the four-foot and the five-foot sidewalks? Because I wasn't in on those meetings, so I just want to know the rationale there. Other than cost, is there anything other than cost?
Four- and five-foot sidewalks were, oh, sorry, were debated over a couple of meetings or at a couple of meetings with the advisory team, and the recommendation from the advisory team was to go with a four-foot. Now, each advisory team member voted with their own conscience, and I'm fairly certain they all had their own rationale for doing so.
Well, the advisory team members that are here, can you share your rationale with me? I'm just trying to get a handle on that.
Can that be changed later, data?
It can be, it can be a change order.
And the difference in cost?
Actually, so the design set of plans are actually five-foot. The quantities that are in there are four-foot. So there wouldn't have to be a change order, but the additional cost would be, it would be less than $100,000.
For just this piece of it?
For just this piece of it, for the first phase.
So over five phases, that would be?
You guys need to turn on your mics when you speak, please.
Your perspective, Tammy?
We went around and around. So I hate to go against the team advisory committee because that's really where we wanted to make those decisions. As a city engineer, I very much support the five-foot, just because I know that's what Federal Highway recommends. That's where ADA is going. I have concerns that in 10 years, when ADA requires five feet, that we're not going to be able to do any kind of maintenance on the street without updating our sidewalks. So like right now, if we wanted to do a mill and overlay on, say, Redwood, we would have to bring all of those intersections and curb ramps and everything up to ADA standards. So there's some concerns there that could cost us more in the long run. There's been a couple residents that reached out that were concerned about it, but it is our design standard right now to have four feet.
During the committee meetings, it was a very contentious issue with all the social media outcry, I'll say, on sidewalks and stuff. So one of the rationale behind the committee was to go with a four-foot rather than a five-foot sidewalk is to try to appease some of the public with the issue of the sidewalk and not having it as large, more, a smaller sidewalk. Tim, can you think anything else?
Also, our design standard currently is four feet. So there was discussion that then we would have to then revise our design standards to five feet versus four feet?
That's correct.
And also, as stated, if the ADA switches to five feet in 10 years, if the ADA does this, we don't know.
So when you're saying four feet is our design standard, so like for new development, it's four feet? Okay. So it's staying in line with what we already have? Okay. I had misunderstood that. Okay.
So four feet now, and say it goes to five feet in 10 years, Tammy, and we have to redo the road for whatever reason, do we have sufficient right-of-way to go in and add that extra foot?
We do. I think it would be pretty difficult to just add a foot onto four-foot sidewalks. You would pretty much replace the whole thing. I did speak to a couple developers that thought they were just going to go with five-foot anyway because they didn't like the looks of the landing pads, the five-foot by five-foot pads that need to go in. So I do think we probably need to change some of our design standards either way we go.
Other questions, comments? Now, to call the question on the acceptance of low bid with alternate number one of $6,288,888 from Sukup Construction. All those in favor of accepting that bid signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item F, number F1, well, number eight, pay app number two, in the amount of $17,630 to Metro Construction. Can I have a motion to approve that payment?
Second.
Motion is second to approve pay app number two to Metro Construction. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Where are we at in that process on well number eight?
We're waiting for them to build the pump house, so once it gets warmer out.
F2, we received one bid from Ferguson Water Works for the meter replacements in the amount of $49,000. the amount of $49,739. If I had a motion to approve that loan bid?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the loan bid for meter replacements from Ferguson Water Works in the amount of $49,739. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then, just as a reminder, that's just for installation, coordination of the scheduling. We'll be purchasing the meters directly through Public Works.
Very good.
So how many? Do we think that's going to cover administration of how many?
Hopefully 700.
Wow, okay.
Give or take a few.
New business? We had financial reports in your packet tonight, P&amp;Z minutes, and the engineers' report. Any other new business from the council or administration?
I would just comment that that engineers' report was very helpful, and Barb and I met with some citizens on Saturday for the sponsored coffee with the council, so it was very helpful.
Just a reminder, is it too late to sign up for the District III meeting?
I don't think so.
So if anybody's interested, the 19th of March, we've got a P&amp;Z meeting that might as well. But if anybody's interested, contact Karen, and then Andrew contacted me today, said that we've got a quote from Blackburn, thank you, to repair the basement leakage at the golf course. It's about $3,900 bucks. So we'll get that underway.
Would I just comment on that? That's been an issue for years.
Very good. Hearing no other business, I entertain a motion to adjourn at 6:34 PM.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn at 6:34. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. My voice is hanging.